I'll be in order this meeting, I have a school board and board members return their microphones on. We've already had an invocation, but we'll have another one.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for all the blessings that you've bestowed upon us. We ask that you watch over us as we do the district's business, as we keep in mind the best interests of all the people that rely on us. Lord, please, please help us to remember our friend Scott and all the work that he did for us. Please be with his family and all the, all the families of people that have lost loved ones. We ask all this in your precious and holy name.
Amen. We have two people signed up to speak, is that great? I don't care who goes first, you want to go first?
I don't know how this works.
Do you mind using the microphone?
Oh.
Thank you.
First time I've ever been to a school board meeting. Been living here for over sixty-five years, so it's my first time. Never had a problem before. I was talking to Alec, and my problem is masks. My problem is young kids wearing their masks. There is no science there. They're still up in the air about there. And I was just concerned that if it keeps it up, keeps it up, because right now, the media and everything in the government, it wants, wants to keep this thing going. And I was just concerned, like I said, I've been talking to Alec, I was going to talk to you, Jason, for a little bit, but I couldn't get a hold of you. But I'm just concerned to do the right thing. I'm also concerned about things happening in the future. You know, you, you have a, just last night on, on Channel 3 News, we had them, two administrators for Bryan School come out and say that CRT learning, you know, they want it in the schools. There is no place for that in our schools. And I'm hoping that y'all decide not to carry that here, or it's big, get rid of it. You know, we have enough problems as it is to continue racism here. And personally, I don't think there is any systemic racism. And me, I'm a Hispanic, so I should know a little bit about it. Never been oppressed, been here since I was two years old. So, I'm sixty-nine now, fixing to be seventy, living a good life, I'm retired. But I just wanted to talk about the masks. Hope that y'all decide not to bring them back, because like I said, there is no science there. Everything that you can be told, I can congregate that with facts. Thank you.
Good evening. Some of y'all may know me, some of you may not. My name's Trey Steinman. I'm a taxpaying citizen of Iowa I S D. And more importantly, I'm the husband of an educator that's employed by this district. I want to speak tonight to this board of trustees, and I would like for three of those trustees to pay close attention to the words that I'm speaking. These street trustees truly disappointed me in their discussion of the teacher and sentiment allotment program. While I'm disappointed that their vote was a show of tyrannical leadership, I'm more disappointed and appalled by the statements that came from them in regards to the majority of the teachers in the district that voted for this program. Words like division, unfairness, unhealthy competition. Folks, competition is what built this country. Capitalism, that's what made America great. And finally, the statement that really angered me was the statement that if teachers in Iowa I S D wanted to make more money, then they should go to College Station or Bryan. This statement was misguided, smug, and pompous. Why would a board member say that if a teacher wants to make more money, Iowa I S D is not for them? This board should support talented educators to come to Iowa I S D and not dissuade them. Your statements and your actions of not listening to the majority of the teachers shows meaning in the other citizens of this community that you truly do not have the best interest at heart for the educators in Iowa. If you would say that you would move a mountain for any child here in Iowa I S D, why wouldn't you do the same for the teachers? This program is an opt-in or opt-out program for the educators. If thirteen teachers that voted yes, which I will remind you was a majority vote, then they should have the opportunity to opt-in. Those teachers who do not want to participate can opt-out. What you three did with your vote was not listen to what the educators wanted, instead, with the vote you casted, said, "We are, we know what's best for this district, and we will decide." The last time I checked, you live in a democracy and majority rules. This is how you three won your elections. So I implore you, the next time this or any other topic is brought up for discussion, change your words more wisely, and remember that, that children and teachers' needs in this district are more important than a show of perceived power. My last request is that you reconsider this topic and put it back on the agenda next month. Thank you.
Okay. We have a consultation with our attorney, he has another board meeting at seven, so to accommodate his schedule, we're going to go to closed session right now. I don't think we'll be more than fifteen, twenty minutes.
Shouldn't be long at all.
And then we'll open the door back up after that, we're going to closed session, it looks like thirty-seven. In that closing session, consider motion for item number eleven.
That specific verdict needs to be read.
I missed the motion.
Yeah, you moved to walk around, take action.
The motion that was recommended that the board of trustees authorize a legal counsel for court action as discussed in executive session with regards to pending lawsuit filed in Iowa Independent School District versus Delaware D V A Delaware Companies, B L A O calls thirty-six, excuse me, thirty-four, six-ten pending in a twelfth judicial report of Bryan County, Texas.
I'll second.
Taken by Alec, on the favor, raise your hand. Motion, there you six of them. And we'll move back to item number ten.
If you don't mind. I want to welcome Steve Rizer from Gallagher Construction here tonight, and I apologize, community, we jumped around in our agenda items. Mr. Rizer was, is number ten, but we'd like to get him on the road back home before he gets flooded. And this, this has to do in relations to our facilities committee that's been meeting since, I don't know, December twenty-nineteen, maybe. And we've gotten to a point where maybe we need to take some more steps for improving our facilities and so forth. I've known Steve for, had the pleasure of knowing Steve for several years now, even before I got to this position. And the floor is yours, Steve. Thank you for being here tonight.
Well, thank you, guys. Thank you for your time and for letting me be here. I know we're, had kind of a long night already, so I'll try to be as brief as possible, but also try to give you as much information as you, as you need to kind of contemplate moving forward. There's a lot of good and exciting times here with the potential solar farm coming in and your three thirteen agreements and those type of things. So, just a couple of things, I'll talk a little bit about Gallagher and facility planning and bond planning, and then just us as a construction firm. We're a construction services firm, been around since nineteen sixty-eight. We've done all of the delivery methods and, so anyway, we'll kind of just quickly move through. This, this kind of showed you where we, excuse, sorry about that, I meant to get some water. We, this is, basically, this is where we built. We worked for Stratford, this is sitting, you know, pretty much on the northeast quadrant of Texas. Couple of examples here, Athens High School, Dawson, we worked for Dawson I S D, we built their elementary school and their gym. We've done two different, oh, thank you, two different projects for them. We also worked for La Porte, Centerville, so just, this is last May, we did, we did eight, or nine bond programs, North Zulch, Lepan, Calvert, Peaster, Throckborn, Farmersville. So this kind of gives you a little bit of an idea of who we work for. We do small projects, obviously, North Zulch, four and a half million, and our largest one this last May was three twenty-five. Sorry about that. Any questions about so far where we work, kind of who we are so far? Right now, we've got about nine hundred and forty-two million dollars worth of work that we're doing for, as a construction manager, and then we also do program management. We have about two hundred and fifty million dollars of work that we're doing for them as, as a program manager. But the way we typically start is we start with the facility planning. So as you're contemplating a potential project, because you've got a three thirteen coming or you've got some solar farm, you've got an opportunity to take advantage. And so generally, what we do is we start with a facility assessment, and that's getting a summary of the existing conditions, the existing elements of the building, and then summarizing, you know, let's say you've got ten years left on your floor and five years left on your ceiling, and you've got some security vestibule challenges or H V A C issues, perhaps you might have some unused space, or you have too much space that you're using. We'll also look at current building code, we'll look at Texas accessibility standards and A D A, electrical codes, those types of things. And then we come up with some recommendations, and then this helps you with a planning, a summary with a plan. I don't expect you to read these numbers, but essentially, once we evaluate your facilities, then we help develop a living document that allows you to, like we talked about the flooring area, for example. Let's say you've got good flooring in some buildings, and then you've got other flooring in some other buildings that might need to be replaced over a four or five-year period. So what this allows you to do, for instance, example, this is restructure parking lots, exterior ceilings, sidewalk repairs, stained concrete flooring, there's flooring there. And so we, we put a value to those so that you can gauge each year on when you can replace those. So let's say flooring lasts five years, or you've got, you know, in the elementary, you've got flooring for five more years left. We put that in two thousand, say twenty-four, twenty-five, and then you can bump that up. So it allows you to plan accordingly as you do your maintenance budget. And at the same time, we'll take a look at the capacity of the building. This is one that we just did for New Waverly. New Waverly, and so what we look, when we do a capacity study, we'll look at the existing classroom sizes, library sizes, administrative type space, and then compare that with T E A standards. What New Waverly does, though, is they like to keep twenty-to-one student-to-teacher ratio across the board. And so that's exactly what we did with them, is we looked at the square footage of each classroom, and then gauged that by twenty students per teacher for each classroom, which gives us a gross capacity, a functional capacity. So for example, the gross capacity is if you take the square footage of all the classrooms combined, and then multiply that by twenty, that gives you a gross capacity. However, you know, especially in the elementary school, you're going to have, you're not going to use one hundred percent of the, of the school one hundred percent of the time. Students move to cafeteria, they move to playground, they move to lunch, and those types of things. Then you have what's called a functional capacity, or net capacity. And so with that, in this particular situation, they've got room for whatever that says, thirty more students, let's say, in the elementary. And we do that with the junior high, high school, every, every building that you have. A lot of times, what we find is you have an abundance of space in some areas and not enough space in other areas. And so it just helps you gauge, especially if you anticipate any kind of growth in the future, if you anticipate new neighborhoods. I kind of heard some folks talking about, you know, new housing and new housing developments coming, potentially coming onboard. If that's the case, then we help analyze that based off what your current situation and condition is, condition is from a capacity standpoint. And then we summarize, this is a, this is kind of where we're, specifically where New, where New Waverly is, their junior high is already at capacity, their high school will be at capacity here in a couple of years, but that's based off no new housing developments, that's just based off factors that we've considered over the last five years of enrollment history. So we kind of, we can, and at the same time, as I mentioned earlier, oh, I think earlier we showed that slide where Van Alstine, we were doing three hundred and twenty-five million dollars worth of bond, well, that's a, that's a fast-growth district. So they're anticipating thousands of new homes coming online over the next five years. Well, that's a different factor that we would use when we've got fifty new homes coming in. So it's all part of the facility planning, getting an understanding of the conditions, and then of course, building that living maintenance document. And then if there are some larger capital improvements to take advantage of, especially with your, say, your three thirteen money, then we can get into potential bond plan, if that's, if that's, you know, what the district decides to do. This is what we just did for Calvert, just a real blessing up there. They've never passed a bond before, ever, and it was truly an honor to be a part of that. We, we helped Dr. Hurst and his business manager see the whole thing. That was a four-years, four-year project in the making. So, and then sometimes that happens, you know, sometimes you have to work for two or three or four years to, to get a big, large capital improvement. But what we do is help the district with their, you know, district informational material, the presentations, the flyers, the planning of the bond, any kind of signage that's there, any newspaper ad, that kind of thing. We, we essentially facilitate the bond election process on behalf of the district. At the same time, if there's a political action committee involved, or if there's people that want to advocate for the bond, then we also help support that endeavor as well, from signage and social media, newspaper ad, this is, we help, anyway. So there's kind of two campaigns going on at the same, same time, one from the district that's informational, and then one from the advocating standpoint. So these are just, the Farmersville's another one, another example of some flyers and brochures that we put together, but we're actively involved, literally, and we, we developed the bond election schedule from the time you decided if you want to do it to, to the election time, and the output of deliverables and those types of things. And then, of course, we do construction management. I know I'm kind of giving you a whole broad base, but just kind of give you a picture of the holistic approach here. From a, from a construction management side, I know there's some construction folks in, in the room, which is awesome, we generally will help with the architect selection if there, if there needs to be one. Obviously, the scope of work, the type of project, has a lot to do with whether or not there's an architect that needs to be involved, if there is, which most of the times there is. We'll help with project phasing, scheduling, design, construction. Sometimes, especially when you have a three thirteen agreement, you might have more than one of the solar farm come on, come onboard. And so then we have to collaborate with your financial advisor on a statement of cash flows, on when we can get the money, and then how far along we can get into construction based off the money that you sell. We do that a lot with wind and solar, a lot with manufacturing plants and that kind of thing. So it's, it's important to anticipate, if you go out for a bond based off three solar farm phases, and you only have one that's in the ground now, well, that's going to impact how much money you can get immediately. So it's important to phase that, both design and construction, construction schedule. And then, of course, we work with the architect on construction material type, and then construct ability of plans. And then we also, we'll do a estimate and budget check set, as well as constructability review at thirty-five, fifty, fifty, seventy-five, and ninety-five percent progress as that architect progresses on the, on the drawings. That way, we're keeping on budget, we're constantly updating our estimates, and then we're making sure that, of course, we're going to minimize our constructability challenges. And then, and then we actually create the bid packages for roofs, for example. So, once the architect gets done with construction documents, we'll, we'll create the bid packages for dirtwork, roofs, plumbing, all the construction divisions. That way, everybody's bidding apples to apples. And so the benefit is, is you don't have to interpret what the bids are. Some people might, one, one construction firm, or roof, let's say roof, they might include guttering and blocking in their bid, and another, another roofer might not, just because they want to get a lower cost. So we'll bid it to where it's apples to apples, where everybody sees, where everybody bids on the exact same thing. And then they're all public bidding, bid opening, so then we, we'll open them, literally, right here in the boardroom, you guys get to see every, every plumber's number, every concrete, dirtwork number. We don't see them beforehand, so it's extremely transparent. And then we evaluate them based off their, make, make sure that they didn't, in fact, bid it on, bid the job the way they was close to, and they have the correct insurance and safety background checks and all those types of things. And then we award the bid. But you guys actually, if we rank them, and we say ABC Plumbing is the cheapest, and we recommend them, but you guys say, "Oh, we used those guys on the last job, we'd rather use the next guy." Well, then you have that ability to do that. So you literally get to see and be involved with every number in bid that's out there. So essentially, we work, this is, of course, you know, the district, the architect generally is on a percentage figure. We work more on a flat, well, we don't work more, but we work on a flat fixed dollar amount. That way, we can help evaluate different products at different price points and not be, not have a vested interest in what you decide. And then, of course, we manage the trade contractors. This is just an example, and I don't expect you to read all these numbers, but this is Centerville's elementary school. This is building, cleaning, and excavation, and site utilities, and concrete, fencing, and masonry, and these are literally every bidder's number right here. And we also bid alternates, but that way, you guys get to see everybody's number, and then we essentially pull that up into a total sheet, and then you wind up with your final, final cost, and that is that before we even start construction, you have that final cost already established. So it's a pretty transparent way to, way to do that. And then, of course, once we, once you guys approve that potentially, then it's, we mobilize and obviously, you know, get our job site trailer, job site superintendent, manager, just like a regular construction site. And we do status updates, so that every month we'll bring you, this is, this is for Brock I S D, in fact, this was, this was their main board meeting, tell them where they are in the way of progress on their budget and their costs, and then where they are in terms of progress in the job. And address any kind of issues. Most people here have had something to do with construction, no job goes perfectly, and so this is also a time that we say, "Yeah, we're, you know, we're waiting on this to be," and this is a real common conversation we're having right now, is we're waiting on steel to be delivered, and we're waiting on concrete to get there. We're on, on concrete, ratcheting, on a, on a big high school project, right? It's cra- it's just unbelievable, and I know what, you know, the lumber's doing right now, too, it's crazy. So, so it's important to keep those open lines of communication, so whether it's a little, small job, or whether it's a large project, we, we approach it pretty much the same way. So, any questions? The first thing to do would be to get that facility assessment complete, and then that'll help you prioritize on what you may or may want, may or may not want to do, but at the same time, to give the district a little bit of a guideline on what to include in a bond potentially, or what to put on a maintenance type of budget.
Steve, we've talked about this before, but the assessment is free of charge, right?
Excuse me, yes, sir.
And you wouldn't pay for that even if we didn't, if we chose to go with somebody else or to stop the project?
You betcha, absolutely, yep. No, as Scott mentioned, we, I've known him for a long time, we, as you can tell, we're at North Zulch, and we're at Calvert, we're down at Royal, we run up and down these roads, we're at Norman G, we're at Leon, so we run up and down these roads all the time. And so it's, if we were fortunate enough to, to work with you on a future project, we would need to do this anyway. So this, hopefully, with nothing else, it gives you a tool, tool to utilize, and there's no obligation or expectation whatsoever, we just, we know that resources are tight, especially in smaller districts. As you, as you mentioned, as you, as we talked about in the, where we work, if you take a look at most of these docs, they are in the rural area. We do work for some fast-growth districts, but if you look at, let's see, where were we here? Just take a look, there's really only one major out of all these that's a major fast-growth district. Most of the districts that we work with are rural districts, or they're on the outskirts of a, of a metroplex that's on the brink of growing fast, but they don't have the resources or the manpower to hire a facilities department. And so that's usually the way we work, so we're very used to doing this kind of thing, understanding that, hey, there's a good, good chance that this might not go anywhere with us.
If we wanted to do the facilities review, what, what kind of timeframe, what, what would you need to do that?
That's a good question. This would probably take about a month and a half total. I mean, to walk through the buildings is only a couple of days, but by the time we gather, because, pardon me, there'll be some issues that we might need to do a little bit more, hey, we need to come back and see this, or we need to get some more information from the district, especially if, if we want to do H V A C data, then we might need to, you know, it might take a little longer because we need to just collect some of the data.
And are you like on a timeline as far as being able to get to us? Are we looking at like June, July?
Yes, ma'am. We could start, you know, we could probably start in this month. We are already middle of May, so I feel like we just started the year. But yeah, we could get us started this. So I would say probably July, August would be about the timeframes that we could have a deliverable back to you. And usually, what we do is we, we provide a preliminary type of report, and then a lot of time, there's, well, let's look a little bit deeper into this, or let's kind of find out what it would cost to do that, and then, you know, that's usually a board meeting or two worth of process.
And if, if this is something that we're not charged for, is there a, is there a written agreement to, to start that process? I mean, is, I mean, you're doing it, you know, for no charge, but, you know, obviously, we want to make sure that we are going to get it beyond just your expertise and...
Well, my goal is to be Iowa's guy, whether it be a large project or a broom closet. If I don't deliver something on time, I wouldn't be starting off on the right foot. So, and if we, if we run into some, some snag schedule-wise, you'll be well, well aware. So it's, we're just as invested in getting it done as, as you are. But if there needs to be something, we have it.
I just don't know the process, so I'm just trying to figure it out.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Steve?
So, again, the reason I brought Steve in, since I've known him a little while, they've been working in surrounding districts, North Zulch, Centerville, Norman G, Calvert, New Waverly, and I believe you mentioned, I heard this from someone, if not from you, did Gallagher had ten bond projects out this month, and nine of them passed?
We had nine, and eight passed.
Nine and eight passed.
The one that did not pass, that was Springtown I S D, which is up north of Weatherford. And what we have found, and we, I have data, you know, I didn't know what there's, but the conversation would go on this, but we have data on, you know, is it May or November? What's the tax rate increase? What's the dollar amount? There's a lot of variables, especially now, because this is the second bond cycle where we've had to abide by the new law that says this is a property tax increase. At the same time, you have to do a separate bond proposition if there's athletic facilities that have a thousand seats or more. So we're all, last November was the, the first cycle, but then we also had this presidential election that caused, you know, a number of new voters that we all saw. But we do have some statistics on passing rates and those type of things. Of the, so like I said, Springtown was the one that... Of the, so, like I said, Springtown was the one that did not pass, and that was the one that we, all, every one of these, as I mentioned earlier with Calvert, uh, we were involved, actually, we started this facility assessment process in 2014 with them. And so, it's been three superintendents since then, so, here. And that's, that happens. And so, the point, my point is, is having early involvement, and having transparent information, and thorough and accurate information to the community before you even call it, is crucial. And I, I can't, I, and the other thing is, it's a seven oh vote. And it's seven oh here in the boardroom, and it's seven oh out in the community. So, if the board is not 100% on board, 100% of the time, both inside and outside the boardroom, you're going to fall into more, not that you can't pass a bond, because it can, I've seen it happen, but more times than not, they don't. Because sometimes, what happens? We vote yes here, but then, we'll go out and say, "I don't think I'm going to support it." I've seen that happen, too. So, that's, but that gives you, it gives us time to work through any of those issues. And so, timing is, is crucial. So, with Springtown, they basically shut everything down with COVID. They didn't have any facility committees, meetings, no community meetings, no planning. But then, all of a sudden, new homes came in, and they were caught between really a rock and a hard spot. They've got new homes coming in, all of a sudden, their enrollment shot up after it, it had gone down. So, they called the bond here this February. We were notified at the end of January. We just didn't have any, we didn't, because we had done our last bond program for them back in 2008, but we just, we didn't have any time to do any communication with the, with the community. And because these are your stakeholders that live out here, and it's important to inform them correctly and go through this process. Because we're going to have somebody that says, "Well, why don't we just build this?" And that's, and that's great. We need to, we need to explore that and give the, give them time to understand and learn. And they also need to understand school finance. And, and the value, as we mentioned earlier, you guys are embarking on a great opportunity with these solar farms. It's going to account for a large percentage of your total tax base. And we've all experienced tax increases, you know, our values have increased. But with this value, that solar farm's going to pay a significant percentage of this potential project. And if we don't educate the community properly, it could, it could fail.
Thank you, Steve. And just for clarification in the room, for the camera, for the ears in here, all we're talking about doing right now is a facilities assessment. We've used the word bond a whole lot. And who knows? Maybe we get there, maybe we don't, but we can't, we don't know until we do this facilities assessment. And we're not entering into a written contractual, con, contract agreement with Gallagher, with Steve, but in order to be transparent, that's why I'm asking for the, the board's blessings to at least allow them to come in and help us with our facilities assessment, because our facilities committee has been stuck for probably three months now, just because I don't know how to truly do a facilities assessment, and Steve's a professional at it. So, that's why I'm asking your blessings for, for Gallagher Construction, for Steve to come in, help our facilities committee with the facilities assessment, so we can see if we need a bond, if we need a bond.
That is a good, that's a good point. I'm not insinuating, as I had mentioned earlier, some of these are four or five years in the making. So, this is not an immediate whatsoever, but it does help the district plan, regardless of whether it might be decided to do one or not.
Yeah, go ahead, and just, that'd be our sample.
So, I recommend that the Board of Trustees approve Gallagher Construction to perform a facilities assessment.
Second by Ms. Mallon. Those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries six oh.
Steve, thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
And be careful going home. Hopefully, you don't drive through too many storms.
No kidding. Thank you guys so much for your time.
We'll, we'll go ahead and try to do the consent agenda. I don't remember if you received any questions?
I did not receive any emails or questions.
Does anybody wish to pull anything out of consent agenda? Okay. Nobody wishes, uh, entertain a motion, approve the consent agenda, present. Motion by Redd, second by Ms. Mallon. Those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries six oh.
Principal reports, Mrs. Juszczyk, ladies first, as usual.
Okay. Um, May fifth and sixth, we did kindergarten roundup. We did it a little bit differently than we normally do. Uh, we just kind of made it like a big event where parents had brought their kids up there, and they, um, gave me all their paperwork in the front office, made copies of it. They went down to the classrooms. They got to meet the kindergarten teachers and go into those rooms, start to, um, do the online registration on a computer set for them in the classrooms, while the teacher, um, kind of just did, um, just a little checklist assessment of where these kids are academically. So, we do class lists, make them have a good balance. Um, so, we had the Bulldog up there, Spike was there, and Snow Cone. So, that, um, I guess over those two days, we got about around 20 new students. Um, today, we had our first of our end-of-the-year celebrations, first grade. Uh, they kind of combined their award, class award ceremonies with just a really special personalized end-of-the-year celebration in their classrooms. And I'll tell you what, it felt so good to have so many parents in the building. I just, we forgot how much we loved that, you know? Even though the line was forever long, and Annie's getting in all the new IDs into the system, it was just a blessing. Um, so, we're really glad that we got to do that today. It felt very good. This week, we have third and fifth grade STAR test, reading and math. Uh, tomorrow, we have fifth grade reading, and then, it's third grade, then it's fifth grade, the next day, then it's third grade again. So, those kids get a day break in between them not taking back-to-back tests. So, we're really utilizing and taking advantage of the window, the large window that CDA gave us for STAR testing. We've been doing it all on, um, the computers this year. Um, this year, we just, next year will be required. This year, we wanted to kind of test it out and see how it went, and so far, so good. Um, I think we had a few little issues, but that was because we were using an outdated Chromebook. So, swapped it out, and it worked just fine. Um, this week, on the 24th, we have prepaid promotion in our gym. We also, on the 25th, have kindergarten graduation. And on the 26th, we have the second grade, um, celebration awards, and third and fourth grade awards. And on the 27th, is fifth and sixth grade awards. So, it's going to be a busy two weeks, but we're glad that we made it to this part of the year.
Mr. Juszczyk, you mind using the remote and turning the projector off? Go ahead, Mr. Fowler, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. A lot of grand announcements going on. So, we had our fine arts, uh, fine arts night, um, a couple of weeks ago. It was a huge hit in the community. Um, we had, uh, we were keeping track of people, and we had over 440 people show up. So, that was, uh, to the band concert and the fine arts night. And so, that was a really big night, um, a new thing that I think we're going to be starting each year. Um, congratulations to baseball. They made it to the bi-district game. Uh, they fought really hard, but they ran up a pretty good team, I guess, former state champion or something like that, so they did really well this year. Um, our theater classes did a great job. They performed, uh, The Wizard of Oz this last Friday night and two, uh, on Saturday, so congratulate them. Um, also, special thank you to Ms. Lero. Um, she did a lot of work and had a very successful prom last Saturday, um, so that went over well. Everybody, um, had a good time. Um, we kind of finished our banquet season, um, so now, we're kind of starting into our ceremony season. Um, the secondary award ceremony starts Monday, the 24th, um, at 10:00 AM, and then, the eighth grade celebration is later that night at 6:00 PM in the gym. So, um, make sure to mark your calendars on that. Um, just other announcements, senior trip, we'll go to Six Flags this Friday. Um, we have 31 students going, um, and I will be attending that. We have, um, I guess, uh, there's about three different sponsors, so plenty of people there, Maru Kids. Um, the Backloret Services will be at Evergreen Church. Is it at Evergreen, or is, okay? So, it's by Evergreen Church, um, I believe it's at Evergreen, on Wednesday, the 26th, at 7:00 PM. Um, volleyball spring game will be versus Breamond Thursday, the 20th, at 5:00 PM, I believe. Um, and then, graduation will be Saturday, May 29th, um, at 10:00 PM in the high school gym. So, it's supposed to be just a regular graduation, um, as normal. We're not going to have it outside this year. And then, I did want to, um, give a special acknowledgement to Mrs. Juszczyk and Ms. Harris for all the work they've been doing on STAR testing. It's been a brutal month of it, really. We're in the third week of it, and I guess they got one more week of it. So, um, they've been doing a great job, so, a lot of great things.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler.
Uh, board members for superintendent report. Uh, one thing that I don't know we had mentioned during the process of approving our new gym floor, maybe it was mentioned, there was concern that there might be asbestos under that old floor? Well, good report, there is no asbestos under the current floor. Um, so, as we pulled it up, we don't have to worry about asbestos abatement. Um, speaking of the new gym floor, we're waiting on the art to come to us. Uh, I think there'll be two or three choices. Uh, I've thought about just doing an online survey, put a survey on our website, and let the community members vote on what, what they want the floor to look like. Um, so, there's discussion of going back with the Bulldog in the center of the court, Texas with the I in it, and that was a third option, I think, that we're working on. And then, our floor would kind of be what you see in a lot of new gyms, uh, with the two-tone wood, so maybe like a lighter wood, main part of the floor, and then, the three-point arc would be the darker stain. Um, but I think we'll just open that up to the public. Taxpayers' dollars, let them tell us how they want the gym floor to look. Um, we were blessed, uh, about to take our state champion volleyball team to the Capitol on April 29th, and thank you, Mr. Pointer, for arranging that. Uh, we spent the day there, um, and Representative Lamont came out and spoke to us a couple of times, treated us to lunch. Um, Senator Schwartner was going to meet with us, but he was blessed with the day-long hearing, poor guy. I would not want to be in his shoes that day. Uh, but it was a great experience and, and a good one for the girls. Uh, so, that was a great day. Uh, I had Backloret, but Mr. Fowler shared that with you guys. He also mentioned, um, graduation. So, board members, if you wouldn't mind being in the high school library at 9:30 Saturday, May 29th. So, it'll be 30 minutes before the ceremony starts, please. And that's all I have for the superintendent's report.
It's going to be weird, aren't they weird?
Uh, in the high school library, we're going to, we're going to go back to the gym for graduation. Thank goodness. Don't have to find any small tornadoes, blow through, five minutes before the ceremony. Yes. Some of them, we lost the others, but...
Item number six, consideration of approval of local investment policy.
Uh, local investment policy, this is TASB Policy CDA Local. This is something we do annually, uh, every year with this, and it's part of our audit to make sure that the board has approved this policy. Uh, it mentions investment authority, approved investment instruments, safety, uh, internal controls, safekeeping, custody, many things in this policy. Um, like I said, this is an annual approval. I just asked the board to approve the local investment policy, CDA, from TASB.
Make the motion. Now, second. Motion second, is there any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries six oh. Item number seven, consideration of TASB update, D and B local and FFA local.
Yes, this was a unique, a unique situation. I think you see in your board package, there was an email we received from one of TASB's representatives. Um, essentially, these were approved back in 2006, uh, but the verbiage in our policy was never changed. So, there, TASB is asking for board approval to change the verbiage. Had to do with D and B local, which is principal evaluations, and FFA, which is wellness, or our SHAC committee, and our SHAC committee's been doing their job over the last couple of years, uh, to assure these were done in 2006. I went and found minutes from February 20th, 2006, uh, where item number six, uh, TASB Local Policy Update 77 was approved, uh, six oh. And then, following that, in April 17th, 2006, item number seven, uh, Local Policy FFA was approved, six oh. So, these policies were approved, uh, and TASB even mentions in their email that maybe their consultant dropped the ball on getting our verbiage updated. So, I just asked the board, um, approve TASB Policy Services according to instruction sheet for TASB Local Policy Updates, D and B, and FFA.
Standing.
One second. Two second, Alec.
Yes, sir.
Second by Alec. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries six oh. Item number eight, consideration of approval of converting bus number 11 to an activity bus.
So, bus number 11 is, um, one of the smaller buses. We haven't been running it en route for a couple of years now. Um, we've had this discussion, I think, two years ago, and about converting it to an activity bus, uh, because of its seating. Um, so, what you have there, the things that Mr. Callahan, uh, has listed for us in order to get that one up and going, I added all those things up, plus a quote from CC Creations to wrap that bus. So, when it pulls up, it'd be eye-catching. Everybody know Iowa's in the house. Uh, it comes out severe, um, in between $7,000 and $8,000. I'll tell you, there's a little play there because CC Creations couldn't give me a full quote until kind of they get their hands on the bus. And, um, some of the things that popped in mind, one of the reasons this has come back up, because cheer's going to have quite a, there's going to be quite a few cheerleaders next year. They wouldn't fit in suburban, so this vehicle came up. Uh, we're looking at adding cross-country next year, so it's possible that cross-country could be transported in this vehicle. We've talked about adding robotics, so robotics team could be transported in this vehicle. Uh, one act play, um, and if it's just varsity volleyball, maybe, or even JV, a single volleyball or basketball team could be transported in this vehicle. And the kicker, you do not have to have a CDL to drive this vehicle. If no other reason to update this vehicle so we can use it for transportation, that would be it. So, I just asked to give us permission, uh, to spin this and convert bus number 11 to an activity van for the district, or activity bus for the district.
What was the seating capacity, did you...
You know what, Ms. Mallon? I wish I knew the answer to that. I think it's... I want to say like 15. 12 to 15, I think, Ms. Mallon.
And, and what, what are we thinking on the, on the wrap? What, what's going to be on it?
They will send us a couple of options. Um, I have a picture of, uh, actually, Madisonville has a full-size activity bus, and it's just kind of like their, uh, you know, how, how they have, like, the Texas flag and the Mustang. It'd be something similar to that, so it'd be a Bulldog, our school colors. Um, but they'll send us some artwork, and heck, I don't have any problem posting that online, letting the community vote on that, too. Um, takes the heat off me.
I make a motion that we, uh, use the, what is it? Converting bus 11 to an activity bus.
One second.
Yeah, second. Motion second by Redd. I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
We've been talking about this so long, I can't remember. Did we build that in the budget, or were we taking that from the, uh, the assigned fund balance?
It's not built in the budget, so it would come from assigned fund balance. But remember, what we talked in the budget, in the budget workshop, we'll amend.
Okay.
So, that whole cross probably wouldn't come out of, out of assigned fund balance. But if it does, we've got plenty there.
I think we were talking about that.
Yes, sir. Yeah, at least, at least.
So, you would be doing it this year or in next year's budget?
We would do it this year.
Okay.
It would come out of this year's budget and be ready on the fall.
Okay.
Yes. But it would come out of, essentially, it would come out on assignment, you know?
Okay. Uh, those in favor, any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries six oh. Alec, hide, no one's going to see.
No.
Consideration of COVID, uh, number nine, consideration of COVID procedures update.
Um, this is something, um, put together, looking at what some of the other districts have done, listening to our community members. Um, I emailed this to you guys, I think, last Thursday, for you to read over. I haven't received any questions, comments, concerns. Additionally, uh, along with that, uh, we had a SHAC meeting last week, so that's our School Health Advisory Committee. Uh, they looked over this very document, uh, they were good with it. And the SHAC committee's made up of Nurse Elliot, uh, parents, teachers, administrators. Um, and then, since we don't have, um, a county health official, I emailed it to Judge Vouth, make sure we had his blessings from the county perspective. So, the SHAC committee and Judge Vouth have both given their blessings to this, uh, policy. And essentially, if you guys vote to approve it, that would make mask optional beginning tomorrow. And then, we have some changes to how we will quarantine. But it would be on a much less stringent basis than what we've done this year.
I make the motion that we have to review the COVID procedures updating effective tomorrow, states.
I'll second.
I do have a question.
Will you take it up or?
On here, so some teachers with health problems or compromised immunity might require masks in a classroom? I mean, so it's, I mean, we're still not gonna force that kid to put on a mask. We hope the kids would respect those teachers' requests. I think you're gonna see that more at the secondary, so it might be for one period, a kid might have to wear a mask. We don't plan on taking any disciplinary action if they don't. But an example would be that if I've asked Mr. Pointer to put a mask on my classroom, and he says, no, I'm not putting one on. And he typically sits next to my desk, and I might move his seat just for social distancing purposes. And the point behind that number is that we've gotta respect the wishes of our teachers as well. We want to do what we're hearing from the community, wanna do right by essentially getting rid of masks, but giving those people that think it benefits them or will help protect them, we wanna give them an opportunity to wear it. And so we're essentially just gonna ask that our kids respect those requests, but we're not going to explain why we're doing that.
Is that carrying over and over on over into next year's school?
Yes, ma'am, I would say a starting school with these policies right here.
Now, since there are some changes for quarantines and things of that nature, what is the plan to make sure that the community knows about all this?
We're going to push this out, this very document will be posted on our website tonight. And the message will be pushed out, pump-up messages, and let you, I forget how we worked it, so I apologize. It may say that masks are optional, and for further details, go to our website. Or it may just say that an update's there. So we have that message prepared, provided it's approved. And I have an email prepared to send out to the teachers with this actual document in it.
Have the teachers, do they know that this is coming?
We've talked to some of them, I can't say they all know. If I told you, they all hear that, I'd be accurate.
And still, lunch, everything, still gonna have the dividers on the tables, is it still?
We still have the dividers. We didn't address that here, but dividers can be optional, too, not wearing masks.
The dividers take the place of the mask during lunch, and that might also.
So, very true, that's why we had the dividers, so that we didn't create a time.
Right.
So.
And I'm just saying it now, I hope these kids should get back to the normal.
As possible, and we'll probably be doing that. Prime example would be element for secondary schedule, going back next year to having first and second period and a break in the third and fourth period, just two lunches instead of three. Trying to make life look as normal as it did before.
Build a statue for you after that, give them a break, bud.
Build a statue of me, it's just a grown, right, man.
Any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 6-0. Moved out of number 12, consideration of approval of adding a counselor to elementary campus.
I'm gonna turn the floor over to Ms. Sedjuski. Because I don't think I step out, I guess what I'm saying.
So I think, I think one of the, well, first of all, I know we've been talking about this for a couple of years unofficially, just kind of throwing it around. What would a counselor at elementary do, what would their responsibilities be? And I think that this year, seeing as we, you know, we continue to grow, we've got a lot more students, just an extra set of hands to take over some of the some of the daily work that comes along with my position. You know, the counselor would be there to assist that, anything from doing 504s to the LPAC meetings, to the counseling alone. And just kind of running those, helping me run those day-to-day things. Also, one of the things that we saw this year after COVID and after the kids being home the last few months of school is we've seen a lot of counseling needs arise from that. Whether it is increased anxiety over things that their family has faced because of COVID, whether it's that parents have lost jobs or living in a different home. You know, some students being at home with, in a home environment that was not conducive to their social-emotional well-being. So we're seeing a lot of increases in those concerns as far as social-emotional goes. Also, the counselor would be in charge of not only the counseling needs, but implementing and with fidelity our social-emotional learning required program that the DA has to do. That counselor would be in charge of going into rooms, you know, one grade level a week, and doing some sort of social-emotional lesson with them. And so helping support the teachers through that as well. So I think with a lot, with the increase in the kids that were, the amount of students we're getting now, and also the needs to take care of their social-emotional wellness, we just have seen that a lot more this year than any other year I know I have. And it comes with an increase in certain behaviors, it comes with making it harder for those kids to learn. So that would be the main role of that counselor, would be to tackle that first, and then help assist in other areas of running some of those student programs as well.
Should we strictly do it at the elementary?
Yes.
Not carrying over to the high school?
I hope not. I'd like to keep that person.
Assigned to them.
I'm gonna be stingy with that person, I think.
Do you have any idea what the percent split of their effort would need to be? I mean, you know what, between the administrative and the 504s and Rs and all that, and counseling, the actual counseling?
Sure, I would, I'd sit down with that person, I'd go over top-tier concern, social-emotional students, that's gonna be number one. That's gonna be the thing that takes precedence. One thing that I would like the counselor to take over as far as the paperwork set is just the 504s. That counselor wouldn't have to sit in the art meetings, I would continue to do that. But really, those would be the two major things, student coming first, the student counseling.
So that person would then take over the 504 paperwork?
Yeah, I would be there to train, and we'd kind of break it off in pieces. So she would, I wouldn't just give her all the 504 folders to start with, training breakup the next few years. It would be something that that person would take over.
The only thing that I would say is there are a lot of bills right now that are talking about limiting what counselors are able to do.
Yes.
There's one that I think is on from the House that went to engrossment, and it limits counselors. They have to spend 80% of their time actually counseling.
I love that.
So.
I love that, yeah.
If we have too many things that they're doing, now, there's some things for small districts where there's waivers there, but.
I would, yeah, my main goal is I don't want a counseling group of hers or a student to go without because she's doing a better for me. That would not be ideal for me.
And you're wanting this person to start next week?
Yes.
Next week? Next school year, it's a week.
Either one, right? I'm sorry. And because I've not been on the board, can you walk me through what the hiring process is? I mean, what do we do for that?
Sure, so with your blessings, the job will get posted tomorrow on our career portal. We would love to see if we purchase that service with Tasby or TASSA, where the service centers will be posted multiple places. Has to be posted for 10 days. At the end of those 10 days, Ms. Sedjuski, I would imagine Ms. Harris will sit in on that committee, probably Mr. Fowler. Grab some elementary teachers, there'll probably be a committee of five or six, would review the applicants, call, schedule those interviews. Call them in, probably in here, interview, and then whatever committee, whoever the committee thought was the best person, once you guys get that right, and you've seen the call.
So when would we know about the bill? It kind of bothers me about the bill, 80% of the time, counseling with a small school, but you did mention a waiver that we could possibly. Because I'm thinking, 80% of your day, counseling kids, with our small school, you're gonna be pulling kids out of class time? I mean, what, 80% of your time?
I don't think it's going to pass through.
I hope not.
But this is the session of social-emotional bills, there's hundreds of them. And, I mean, they're falling over themselves to vote for them. And I think it's not a bad thing, you know, but our ratio for kids to counselors is already better than the state. I mean, I think it's like 1500 to 1 at the state.
So, so in the past, we've had a part-time counselor, so that's not an option, that's not what you, that's not an option, part-time.
And that person was splitting their time between elementary counseling and secondary special ed. And so the counseling piece of it is.
We never got the counseling.
The attention they needed.
Have a motion on it, is there?
I'll move that we approve the counselor at the elementary campus.
Second. Motion second, any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. And motion carries 6-0. Item number 13, consideration of approval of adding intervention position of secondary.
Yes, so this year, you know, in kind of an extension of one of our board goals in the reading program, we've been looking at where can we be the most effective, and what position can we incorporate that would really truly help our students? And in the last year or so, we've seen, you know, a significant drop in a few different areas. And reading is one of those areas. So we feel like getting somebody that can come in and really kind of vertically align all of our reading classes. And even at some point, going down into elementary and helping vertical align, those would be very beneficial. Our junior high classes are so large right now that we've got our regular reading teacher teaching regular classes and intervention classes. And so that teacher is kind of responsible for teaching both. And we've gotta find a way to really loosen some of the, unfortunately, that we have a very large seventh-grade group. Well, one of those ways is to kind of take that intervention off to the regular reading teacher and providing a reading coach that also does intervention. As well as the intervention, we will also include like credit recovery. We have, I don't know, a handful of students that I would say are kind of on that borderline that really need a lot of intervention, need a lot of help. And she would be able to get in there and really build, or he would be able to really get in there and build those students' learning abilities. And as we all know, the STAR test is one of those areas that, it is a reading test. It doesn't matter if it's math, science, obviously, reading, writing, you've gotta be able to read, you know. So making sure that we're really building that foundation, we're trying to really make the best growth area and possibility for our campus. And I really believe having a reading coach slash interventionist to do that is gonna help us bridge some of those gaps and some of those areas that we've really kind of seen some failing down or falling down a little bit in the last year or so.
I guess the same question, the percent of effort that you foresee, like one-on-one or small group with the students versus working with teachers? Because I know on your job description here, you have a good number of things for staff development that you want them to do as well.
So we want them, that's where the vertical alignment kind of part, these comes in, we really want them working with those teachers, especially some of, we have amazing reading teachers. But it's really hard when you're teaching multiple subjects to really have that time to build in the intervention, to really build in those higher-thinking classes. And so this will kind of help someone to be able to just sit back and look at each class. And say, okay, this is how we're teaching reading. So we're not kind of teaching reading like this, we're teaching it in a singular manner. So that when I go from seventh grade to eighth grade, I'm not losing anything. From eighth grade to ninth grade, I'm not losing anything, I'm staying on the same track. And that's really one of the areas that, not that we struggle, but that's just an area where there's some wasted energy and wasted space just because, you know, seventh and eighth are kind of vertically aligned because it's the same teacher. But when you go from eighth to ninth, you know, you're going up into that high school area. And from ninth to the upper level, you have a different teacher. And so it just provides one person with the ability to kind of sit back and say, okay, this is where we're going. Can see it from the high point advantage point, and kind of give it a better kind of vertical alignment for every student to be more optimized in that reading.
I mean, I think that's great, I'm just really interested in seeing how much they're gonna skew towards, you know, the one-on-one or small groups with the students versus that stuff. Because I think the small groups and one-on-one is really, really important.
So what we've kind of like done, like a mock schedule, and so there's eight periods in a day. We're trying to leave two full periods for that kind of intervention with the coaching aspect, with the ability to go to different teachers, sit in those teachers' classes, give kind of constructive feedback, and provide any kind of direction, help them with their lesson planning, help them, you know, making sure that they know how to read the data, making sure that that person is giving the proper information to those kids to help them grow. Then I think there's gonna be three periods of intervention. So you would go and actually have seventh grade reading class, and then an eighth grade reading class. And then whichever one, the seventh grade is the largest one right now, so it would be, and the seventh grade would have the extra one. And then one extra class of credit recovery. It'll be an accelerated credit recovery, but this person can help that person get one or two classes, or one or two complete classes in one semester. So you can get caught up real quick on some of those kids that might be high-risk or crop out and things like that.
That's awesome.
Okay, any further discussion? I don't think we have a motion on 13 yet either.
I'll move.
Motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
You got that? Motion by Coach, second by Alec. Those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 6-0. Item, last track, 14.
14.
Consideration of approval to install the air conditioner and make repairs on the tank, bus 22 and 23.
So you just thought you were confused when we talked about buses earlier. These, this stems from the same conversation we've had for a while now. A couple of months ago, we approved the purchase of the used bus that had AC that was replacing the total bus. We had a conversation about these two particular buses being repainted and air conditioning installed in them, but we just had the conversation. So making sure I do my due diligence, I'm bringing it back to the board for your approval before we have the work done this thing. And what you see in there is the two quotes. Again, it's making the bus look like brand-new, it's putting an air conditioning system in it. One of the buses is a little bit more than the other, it had some bodywork or something that needed to be done. And actually, when we bid out the bodywork, this place was the cheapest for the bodywork as well. So that's why you see a price difference in those two. But again, bus 22 and 23 are two of our most reliable buses, and we send our kids out in those because we know that we'll get them there and get them home, but they're the ones that might look a little faded, a little aged. And so that's why we've discussed this as a district, is making these two reliable buses look brand-new. Just ask for your approval to essentially do what we've been talking about for two months now, I just wanted to make sure it was official.
I make the motion, air conditioning.
We've already got it.
And repainted.
These would come out of that assigned fund balance. Yes, sir.
I'll second, but I also have a question.
Sure.
We have a motion, second, if there's further discussion.
I don't have Mr. Callahan.
No, 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 on the last page of the estimate, there's a handwritten 14,000.
Great question. Maybe that was, I wonder if this is the bus that has the bodywork? And so minus the bodywork, maybe that was the number?
Okay.
I'm just guessing there, I don't have a.
Hoping we were getting a discount.
Well, the way I see it, too, though, is a little over 18 for one, a little over 17 for the other. And new buses, air-conditioned buses, what, 90, 90,000? So I think we're still getting.
Yeah, we're doing good. And then no one has to take a phone call from one of the people that are traveling at the same time, asking why they didn't get that air-conditioned bus.
Right, so now we have three.
Any more question, any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. And motion carries 6-0.
And an air-conditioned activity bus.
Item number 15, person.
We just had one teacher left off last month's list, apologies to her. There was no reason, just mistake, clerical mistake on our part. So I ask that you approve Caris Shopp's contract for next year.
Second motion by Tammy, second by myself. Any discussion? Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Tammy, motion carries 6-0. Item 17 adjourned.